I'd like to welcome everybody to this joint meeting of the City Council of Medina and Medina City School District. We usually have this once a year pursuant to our rules of council. We have a joint meeting just to discuss various issues that affect both the city and the school district. Prior to starting here, I think I'd just like to go around and everybody introduce himself. I think there's some new faces on the school board, not necessarily on council, but I think on the school board. So if we could start over here.
Yes, David Chambers, Treasurer.
Dave Knight, Superintendent.
Danny Simpson, Council.
Jim Shields, Council and Director of Human Resources for the School District.
Paul Rose, Council.
Rob Skidmore, the current Board President for Medina City Schools.
And I'm John Coyne, the President of City Council.
Brian Hilberg, City Council.
Mark Colasar, Ward 3, Councilman.
Doug Eastwood, Board of Education, Medina.
Dennis Hanwell, Mayor.
Ron Ross, Board of Education, Medina.
Becky Parker, Board of Education, Medina.
Tom Cahillan, Board of Education.
Thank you, and I'm glad that everybody could make it this evening. As we usually have the meeting, we, last year, we talked about many different issues, ranging from some collaborative efforts to the rec center, naming rights, and various things that we each can help each other on and make it a better community for everyone. The first thing, I guess, we can go over again, just to refresh everybody and bring everybody up to speed on what has been occurring between the city and the school district, is the current and collaborative efforts between the city and the school district. And I believe both Mayor and the Superintendent have prepared a list and maybe can review them. I don't know who wants to go first, to give us a little update on how things are going.
Go ahead, sir.
Well, the Mayor and I put our heads together and recounted a variety of things that we do together. First couple on the list, we have a shared civil service office, and we have Medina City Schools benefits from having two full-time SROs, School Resource Officers, provided by Medina City Police. In exchange for that, we provide IT services, technology support, and planning for the city. I don't know, how do we want to tag-team this, Mayor?
You're doing great, I just keep going.
Okay, I'll do a couple more, and then I'm gonna hand the baton. We also are Performing Arts Center. We share, the school provides space for Channel 36 and 37. We share the hiring and cost of some employees. That benefits not only the Performing Arts Center, but we also do the same thing with the rec center. We also, most recently, we've, I think there's a poster hanging close to us, Healthy Medina Initiative, sponsored by the Medina Hospital. The city and the school district have been promoting better health awareness on the part of all of our staffs, so we've been working together on that. And then we do some cooperative purchasing power for office supplies, so we can get the best deal. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Knight. So, just a few of the others. We share equipment and facilities. There may be a need. The school has a partnership council, that it's difficult for them to get a room large enough at one of the school buildings, because school is in session during the meetings, so they meet in our multipurpose room in the basement. There have been other times that the city has needed space for training or for having our officers when school is not in session, tour each of the buildings, be familiar with the layout, so there's a good exchange with that. Jim Shields assists the city with human resource needs, sometimes questioning or interview processes with department heads. His insight is very helpful with disciplinary issues, being he does that day in and day out, the human resources, not just discipline. And then likewise, if there are security questions or security needs, Mr. Shields sometimes, or the Superintendent will contact myself and/or the police chief to assist with those things. We purchase our road salt together. We get a better price state bid for the bulk that we buy collectively, so we each end up using the tax dollars more efficiently by doing that. The schools has a large parking area for their buses on West Smith Road, and we needed a location. We used to have them at the fairgrounds in a fenced area that they ask us to remove our impounded police vehicles from, and we arranged with the schools to have those there. It's under video surveillance, it's fenced in, and then in exchange for permitting us to use that lot intermittently, we bring our street sweeper over and clean the lot several times a year, when requested by the schools. Our vehicle diagnostics, the city has two different types of vehicles, and the school has two different types of buses, manufacturers-wise, so each of us individually have bought the vehicle diagnostics for one of the sets of vehicles, and we share that with the city and schools, and vice versa. They have the other one for the other half of our vehicles, and then basically the diagnostics are done, and then our mechanics take it from there with our vehicles. Our city staff have been asked to be either class presenters or mentors for staff for some of the in-service programs. When I took over as Mayor, I joined Mr. Shields, who for years has been doing a third grade program where we bring in literally every third grader in the district, and assign them different administrative positions, council positions, and work them through the process of an ordinance, and what it takes to pass that, what it takes to override a veto, and literally give them the choice to see whether or not they want the ordinance that's presented to them, or they don't. I think these next four years or so.
The city has the Bowman Lane House, and we utilize that space for service of many of our children that have special needs. We appreciate that. We also have collaboration on the JED Board and economic development. Both the city and the school district realizes it's in our own best interest for economic development to happen in a positive way for our community, so we work very closely in those areas. And then we, with our school baseball and softball fields, we maintain those during the school year, but during the summer months, we like to open those up to other community groups and city leagues, and they help with maintenance of those fields. And then the last item that we'd like to highlight is we provide internet service for the rec center, so that individuals who aren't swimming or jogging can use their devices and access the internet. And I'd just like to say, this list, I'm sure the Mayor and I have forgotten a couple of areas that we should have highlighted, that we haven't, but we get together on a regular basis, both, not only the Mayor and I, but staff at Medina City Schools and staff at Medina City. We are constantly sharing, trying to come up with new ideas, and it's, I think, one of the most positive beneficial working relationships that we as school people have with the City of Medina. So, I guess I'd like officially on camera, say thank you, City of Medina, for your ability to work so easily and efficiently together.
We appreciate the relationship. I mean, it's very positive for all of us, and each one of these items that we've listed is just a better way of sharing the limited tax dollars of the schools and of the city, and using them very effectively. Now, Mr. Knight and I did, Mr. Rose, I shared with Mr. Knight, Mr. Rose has a new committee, subcommittee, called Emerging Technologies, and one thing that the Superintendent and I have discussed already is the city has a need. We used to have a reverse 911 system, but now we're lucky if maybe 20% of the homes have landline phones or the old-style phones anymore. So, we're looking at a notification system. So, some research is being done currently for, could their system be added on? And we have a city group and a school student group. Is that possible? Is it possible to access it from here versus only at the schools? Those type things. So, that's future collaboration that we're working our way through currently.
No, thank you. That sounds very positive, and I think we all should be proud of the fact that, you know, the collaborative efforts is making an impact and saving money for the residents of not only the city, but in the townships that are within the school district. And there's always ways to collaborate, and I think this could be a great model, and hopefully other communities, not only between school districts and cities, but cities and cities, townships and cities, and school districts and townships can find ways to make that dollar go a little bit further. And that being the case, I think everybody wins, and we've done well at that, and hopefully we can continue in the future, once we all change positions at some time, because I don't believe we'll be here forever, to continue the process and continue the hard work that has been started and has been going very well. I don't know, Rob, do you have anything else, or does anybody have any other ideas that you've discussed on your board meetings, of things that came up that could be beneficial for both the school district and the city?
Well, there could be, but I mean, just to add to the remarks, thinking of the parks and thinking of things like Medina Soccer, we talked about the baseball and softball, shared fields, but you think about the kids growing up using the parks and playing soccer, playing football, different things, and then they're in the high school, they're playing basketball. They're using, a lot of times they're using the rec center, they're using the shared facilities, and they're successful. And all those years of having those facilities that either the city provides, or they have been developed through partnership, enhance students and what they can do with sports. And so, that's pretty neat that this partnership's gone on probably well before a lot of us were born. So, that's pretty cool. I don't know if anybody else from the board has something that they want to mention from Medina?
Does anybody on council have anything to add or ideas? I know I always have my one idea, which costs money, but at some point, maybe there'll be grants available. I see another communities have, which called, as I bring it up again, Obamadeer, which plows the sidewalks for the kids to get to school, because as we know, it's difficult for some people to get the sidewalk clear. But again, that's something that's gonna cost capital money, and it also has to have somebody operate it. And I went as far as thinking of a name for it. I'd call it the Snowbee, but that's just my personal preferences on it. But that's something that could be helpful, but again...
We could give you naming rights if you wanted to purchase.
Yeah, I guess it could have been, but I think that those things, if, you know, to look at the safety and look at the issues related to the walkers, I guess, within a certain radius of the schools, that's something that could be helpful. But again, it has to be the right mix of either grants or other monies to fund that, because it's something that's not free. But it does serve a purpose, but the question is, is there some point where the money outweighs it, because you don't know what the cost is to operate that particular machine? But that's the only thing I think of that can be another collaborative effort, because of the school districts. I mean, a school building is located within the city, and the closeness and the nearness of each of the houses, and depends on the number of kids walking to school each day, but that's all I have. I don't know if anybody else has that.
You know, and then last year, at the meeting, we talked about the buses and the salt, and I know Dave Knight and Doug Eastwood, several of you, worked together on that with Nino, and if you want to give us an update, it's been probably a year, and we kind of talked about it, I think, after that, but I don't know if we have in this meeting, so...
Well, that was actually developed a little more with John in the process of the facility, and he has, he's done quite a bit of homework on it, and I believe maybe working with another district as well. I'm not sure how that has developed, but it is something we're pursuing to try to maintain the investment we're putting into those buses, which is a significant dollar amount.
Could we mic up John over there to give us?
We've had a little bit of luck with our budget in the transportation area, so we've taken some of our savings that we've experienced with repair costs and diesel fuel, and we're exploring putting in a small wash station in our bus garage. We did go look at the city's station, but buses are much different than dump trucks, so I think we're gonna have to go a different direction there to be able to do buses. But certainly, once we get our system in, we should have the city come, take a look at it, maybe there can be some tweaks made to it, so their vehicles could go through there as well. So, that's kind of where we are at this point. And we have looked at teaming up with another school district, but the distance between us is just a little bit of a push when you're talking about labor costs and that, so that's where we are.
Yeah, but I think that would be a great idea. I think, Mr. Pacoli, from our wash bay, at least for our salt vehicles and other vehicles, I mean, if you could extend the useful life of your asset, that is always a benefit, and keeping them clean and washing the salt off after they're on the roads, after Nino's trucks goes out there and puts the salt on the roads, of course, for a particular purpose, but you need to get that salt off the vehicles so they don't rust, and I guess that's the only disadvantage of living in northeast Ohio or any northern state, is the salt that goes on the roads and wreaks havoc on our vehicles throughout the year, so. But that's, that'd be great, that can, second word. Does anybody else have any comments?
Mine is not about a future one, it's about one that happened last year, and I think it's planned in the future as well. And a shout-out to our coach, head varsity basketball coach, Chris Hassinger. He has some clinics that he and the basketball team put on at the parks, specifically at Mellert Park, and I think it's gained a lot of goodwill with each other, both from the city and the school standpoint, to have that happen, and it's done just out of volunteerism. And I know the basketball team has found a lot of value in getting to know the kids and bringing them along and saying, hey, maybe this is you in another 10 years. So, that's one of the, that just kind of happened, and I think that happens a couple times a year.
Good. Anybody else?
Yeah, I would just like to echo everything that's been, positive things that's been said about the collaboration, and I know my tenure on council, I've been so impressed with the current school board and previous school boards, the willingness to do whatever needs to be done to make our community not only a more successful in a business sense and a partnership sense, but in a safety sense. My background is in public safety, and I just can't say enough about the city staff and the school board staff, how they've kept current with all the new technology that's out there. This partnership has definitely saved lives, and for that, I'm grateful, but again, I just can't say enough with how, with what ease and smoothness that we do work together, and I'm sure that'll continue in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Well, we can move right into, I guess, one of our largest collaborative efforts that has been ongoing is the rec center, working together, using the rec center, having it at the high school campus, and having several programs coming out, both that benefit the school athletic programs, I guess, the PE classes, and also the community as a whole, which is always good. I know the last meeting, we spoke a little bit about and started discussions on the naming rights of various aspects of the recreation center, to see if there's any way that additional funds can be raised, as Highland has been involved in some naming rights on their new stadium. And I think there's been pros and cons that are associated with that, but I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on that. I mean, we did bring that up a little bit, and I know that our committees had meetings on that to discuss it. I don't know how the school board or the Superintendent, anybody's been involved in that.
We had a discussion last fall, and we had the gentleman from Highland speak to us that helped raise funds for their stadium, and I think it definitely piqued some interest. And I know Mr. Ross has been involved before he got on the board with the rec center committee, and I know Mr. Wright's here tonight, too, so if there's some questions, you know, we're welcome to have you join the conversation. But I'm wondering, maybe, Ron, if you could kind of give a little bit of information about your involvement helping to look at this topic, if you wouldn't mind?
Sure. The idea was to generate revenue, you know, other than a tax. We all know that with the funding cuts. So, it's almost like we have to find a way to take care of ourselves, because the state's not in a position to help us much. So, we did have Mr. Phelps from the Partner Marketing come, talk to the rec center first, and he has a good track record. He raised almost, I think it was 2.7 million for Highland's stadium project, and that was just in sponsorship and naming rights. So, he talked to the rec center, and then he came and talked to the school board, and then he talked to Mike at the rec center. He walked around the facility, and the conclusion was, he said, there's a lot of opportunity there. And so, our thinking is, you know, we want to pursue this and see what's there. Highland, Brunswick, North Rualton, and Strongsville all have partnerships with private business in some form, and so why, you know, why can't we do that? Now, we stalled a little bit. Mark talked to the school board, I think, in December. So, we've kind of stalled, but there's a reason, because we're in the middle of a superintendent search, so we want to make sure that we, you know, take care of our priorities. But then, I'd like to reignite that, the talk and discussion about sponsorship and naming rights. I have reached out to a local marketing company here in Medina, and the only reason is not to distance ourselves from Mark, but more to kind of see what else is out there. We have one opinion from a guy with a good track record, and now let's see what somebody else says, and maybe they can help us as well. So, that's why I reached out to Andrea from Lyons Share Marketing, see what she says, and then I had an idea, maybe we would start another committee, a sponsorship committee, but I was, you know, maybe we'll just keep it. We have a finance committee, maybe we'll just keep it within our finance committee and keep it, you know, in-house, and then we can inform everybody as we go along. But we're working with Mike, because it's a partnership with the rec center, and I think that's the start, that's the focal point. And then we can expand, because you might have facilities outside of the rec center, as we might have facilities as well, outside of the city, that we would want to pursue. So, I guess that's where we're at right now, and I'd like to continue to, I guess I want to reignite the talks, and let's, I don't know, let's pick up the pace, I guess, on that.
No, that's great. Danny, and then Mike, do you have anything to add?
I would just like to thank Ron for his support in this. I think it's, it was mentioned a few minutes ago, the funds for the school system from the state that has been cut, and I'm sure it's, you're in the same situation that the city's in, because we've had a decrease in our state funds also. So, anything that we could do, I know for the city, a lot of our sports fields and parks have been dedicated to different individuals on an honorary basis. People have given so much to our community, and I wouldn't want to see that go away, but I do agree with you, Ron, and a lot of other members of the board and on council, that I think it is an avenue that we're gonna have to be more creative in our funding, maybe not for, you know, major capital expensive, but some of the smaller capital projects that we're looking to accomplish in a shorter period of time, to extra funding, I think it's a very interesting idea, so thanks for pursuing that.
Yeah, thanks, Councilman Simpson. One of the things, I was just looking at the joint operating agreement, so, you know, you look at how much would come in. So, after the marketing company would take their cut, whatever is left, you know, it's split, there's like a 30-30 split into each entity's capital, and then the other 20% is split between the city and the school district. So, it gets whittled down, but, you know, my feeling is, I mean, it's more than we have now. It's worth, I think it's worth looking into. And the other issue is, I don't want to say we're on notice, but state legislator is talking about pay-to-play fees. And, you know, that affects the city as well, because, you know, a lot of families can't afford pay-to-play, and so we need to come up with a way to offset that revenue loss, should the state decide to make us eliminate it or reduce it. So, this, I guess, like Danny said, we're trying to just be more creative and kind of take care of our own, take care of ourself, without relying on someone else telling us what to do. So, that's kind of how I see it, but I know, Mike, you wanted to add something.
Mike Wright's the Recreation Center Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just real quick, I'm gonna backtrack a little. I didn't jump up and talk about the collaboration between the schools and city. I did last time, we met last year. And just to touch on a couple things, I wanted to, one, thank the schools, because nobody realizes without really looking into it how deep the partnership goes and how great it is. You know, we have a 110,000-square-foot facility that still looks brand-new, and that's because the maintenance and custodial for the schools do a fantastic job. No other facility has the ability to just, you know, put in a work order and have something fixed overnight, and that's how fast things get done. And, you know, custodial's constantly cleaning and taking care of the facility. It's one thing I hear all the time. Anytime somebody, we take a tour, walk through the rec center, how clean it is, how great of a job the staff does, and I wanted to thank the schools for that. Without this effort, I don't believe we'd be where we are today. You know, we have, we literally spend just right around $190,000 in operating of income tax money. The rest is revenues from programs, day passes, and memberships. $190,000, where other facilities are getting subsidies of $2 million, like Fairview Park, they get a $2 million subsidy from the city to run that rec center. We have the debt service now, but in 2022, that debt service of $510,000 drops off, and that goes back to the city's general fund. Not a lot of facilities can say they're giving money back to the general fund either. So, it's a really, really important effort, and like I said, I applaud it, everybody that was involved in starting it back in 2002, to everybody that keeps it running now, the advisory board members. We got Tom and Ron both on the advisory board now. Fantastic collaboration, so thank you. You know, I wanted to talk about that. So, then, jumping to the naming rights. Last year, we were asked to look into it, because we wanted to cut back. Right now, the schools contribute $138,000 a year towards the capital improvement, which we're gonna discuss next with the, after the naming rights. So, we looked into the sponsorship idea. Ideally, 60% of that, whatever comes in, and sponsorship goes to the capital improvement, and so 30 and 30 from both sides. I would suggest if we do this, that we go ahead and just amend the contract and change it, so 100% of the capital improvement, the sponsorship goes to capital improvement. I think that's a better idea, and that way, we could limit staying at 140 contributions later. We could stay at 100 each, once everything's paid back, and I think that's something to look into. The idea of Mark Phelps, when we talked to Mark Phelps, and he came to the school board meeting, he still has great ideas, he has great contacts. If it is possible to use Mark Phelps, I would suggest we do, but that's gonna be up to the school board now. I think overall, Mark's idea, it scared a lot of people when he said 50-50. That wasn't a negotiation, that was just something we threw out. He is willing to talk about, like, a sliding scale, and he still wants to work with us. You know, his initial cost is probably gonna be about $10,000, he said, to put it together, figure out what the cost will be, and then use sponsors. With his contacts, his example was, you take another firm, and they say, okay, we'll split it 85-15, so 85%. Well, his concept, which is a good one, is, do you want 85% of $25,000 for five years, or do you want 50% of, you know, $50,000 for five years? That's the kind of context he brings into the picture and the sponsorships, and we know that's a great track record with the 2.7 million he got for Highland. So, overall, whatever the school decides, that's fine, and we'll jump on board with whatever sponsorship and whatever ideas you guys want to do. So, we're good with that. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike, and I think the, there's still ongoing discussions at the rec center of additional improvements that goes through the committee, and hopefully that'll attract additional members and have an effect to sustain the current members, and maybe push it out a few more years by increasing the membership if at all possible. And I think, is there additional programs that'll be at it in the future? Have you been planning anything yet, or no?
Sorry, oh yeah, there's always something in the background working. We're working on something right now. Are we on the capital improvement part of the approval fund?
No, yoga for me, no, I was just, you know, just wondering, because I think that there's a great variety of programs for all ages, from, you know, the younger crowd to the older. of programs for all ages, from, you know, the younger crowd to the older. I think it's Silver Sneakers it's called. So everybody can get out and exercise. I think that's the whole goal of Healthy Medina is to try to get more people to exercise on a more consistent basis. I think there's a lot of us that exercise every once in a while, but not maybe on a consistent basis.
Why are you looking at me, John?
I'm just looking at you. But yeah, I don't know if there's anything else on that or the capital improvement funder.
Before we jump on the capital improvement plan on the, on the naming part, I had some ideas. I'm on the, I'm also on the rec advisory committee. By the way, your daughters work a little bit more than you, but I'm just saying.
You don't have to point that out.
Sorry.
Everybody works out a little more than that.
Here are some of the problems we ran into. And I hate to be the person that points out the things that are going to keep us from moving forward, but this is, these are the things that we found as we've done it. Why are we at stage, why are we back to step one again? Is because there are some things that need to be figured out, I think. Number one was that percentage that a marketing firm gets. It's not just, we found out as we have with many things, as we've been on this board, that a lot of people have different opinions about what they think, the public, that is, what they think we should be paying a marketing firm to do so. So everybody's got good ideas in their mind about what we should be paying someone. It's kind of like in sales. If you're paying more than 3% or 5% or 10%, whatever you want to pick in your mind, they got a problem with it if it's higher than what they have in their mind. So we ran into a quagmire with that when we first started talking about it with Mark. That was number one. Number two, and I think it's even maybe a bigger issue, is the wording in the JOA. There's some wording in there, two different things. One is the percentage that Mike alluded to that we probably need to work on changing because I thought it was 40-40, 20, but you're talking about a 30 in there. But either way, it's.
30-30 over capital, 60% and then 20-20.
To the, to the individual, okay. That is in connection with whose idea it was. One of the, one of the key, the words in there is whose idea was it? If, if Ron brings a project and he's got his school board hat on, the bigger percentage goes to the school's portion of that. If Mike comes up, comes to it as a city employee, bigger percentage goes there. And so it was even funny, as we were talking about bringing in the marketing guy, we said, well, then whose idea is it? So to avoid a spit spat, that probably needs to somehow legally be looked at. And so we ran into that right away is, okay, what do we do with that? We even have a lawyer on our board who said, I'm confused with the wording of it. So we're using a document that was made 12 or 13 years ago that originally was designed for immediate sponsorship, looking for naming rights, looking for a big set of cash right at that point. Now here we are, years later, thinking about it from a different reason or a different standpoint, looking at it for a sponsorship over a contracted period of time. So I think that somehow, whether that's, you know, I don't know what lawyer should look at it, but someone should probably sit down and work that out before we get very much, that's what we found out, is that that became a snag. And you're going, well, I don't know. I don't know if that matters or whose idea it is. So that was the second one. And the third one, and this is on our side, I don't know how it is on your side. We have a policy for naming. We have to determine if that's different than a policy for sponsorship. It looks to be one and the same, but the reason I say that is there's a naming committee that has to get together to decide, is this a worthy cause, a worthy name, a worthy memorial? Or, or if it's someone who's a living, you know, honorary. And the question is, is that going to change? Is our policy going to change to allow this to happen quickly on the fly as it relates to not only things at the rec center, but we have to consider the same thing now as we look at, we have a new scoreboard at the, at our high school gym. If there's going to be sponsorship coming up that's being paid for, that's going, that changes, that's different than our policy. So I don't know if you have a naming rights policy for the city, but we may have to look at that as well.
I don't, I think our only naming rights policy is Greg Huber. He reviews things and I know that there, you know, there could be some issues, constitutional issues about how you select and if you have ability to choose certain names over others if they're both willing to pay the same amount of money. So those are some issues that will definitely have to be reviewed, the legal issues of how do you handle those particular cases? I mean, I think the easiest one, I think we talked a little bit about is, I mean, if somebody wants to name their rec center, maybe it's Krispy Kreme Donuts. I mean, so, you know, you have to think about that and say, well, really, is that what we want to name the rec center? But those are the issues we have to, you know, not that I eat a lot of them, but they, but those are the issues that you bring up. And I think that we do have to be all on the same page with regard to that. And I think Mr. Huber can help us in that regard. Paul?
Thank you. And you hit on something that's near and dear to my heart. You've got a lot of people who work hard for the community and they've given their all to build a stadium. So you got Ken Duke Stadium, you got Bill Dunn Field. All right, what do we do for those people? You know, yeah, it's great to bring in the revenue. As somebody who's hit with it, as you are, with the state cuts and things like that, I think it's a great idea, but we don't want to sell short our residents who have worked hard and contributed to the, to the community, okay? Like we don't want to forego the John Coin soccer stadium or something like that, you know? But I'm just joking. But we want to keep those folks in mind too. We don't want to, just because they don't have enough dollars or they didn't contribute enough dollars, but they contributed 20 years of hard work, you know, there's something there. And we've, we've got to keep those people in mind as we make these decisions. Okay?
I, I agree. I'm sorry. We haven't talked about how, how votes would go for sponsorship and naming rights, but I'm on your side. I believe that, you know, like Ralphie Wade Elementary School, that's dear and dear to my heart because Ralphie Wade is all, near and dear to all of our hearts. And that's critical from where I stand point of keeping that as the number one reason for naming. Ken Duke Stadium, et cetera. So the question is, is there, is there middle ground somewhere? Because I don't, I would prefer our buildings, at least in the school district, to not look anywhere close to NASCAR. And I think you start hedging that way. So, but I know that there are folks real close to me who, who think the opposite. Not that they want NASCAR, but as much of that can bring in as much revenue as we can. So I, I don't, I don't know what you do, but I only know that our policy would need to be looked at and changed because right now it is more about a vote of, it has teachers and administrators and, and board members to decide, is that a valuable, is that a valid reason to name something? So question is permanent naming versus sponsorship and is there some middle ground there? My opinion is less is more.
Those are good things that we have to work out. It seems, John, that almost, you know, we can, we may very well be here next year talking about the same thing and, and which is okay if we do. But at almost to some point, we need to say, okay, where is everybody at with it? And if a majority of the boards are both in favor of proceeding, then, you know, we have maybe, you know, one or two of your members and one or two of our members with our superintendent and the mayor get together and kind of come up with, with Mike and come up with the framework to look at all these issues, all the legal issues of the naming and the policy issues with it. I mean, maybe it's possible that the schools might look at amending with respect to the rec center or something. And I mean, I, I don't know, I personally don't know. First of all, I know we're not going to raise, in my mind, probably a million dollars from this because the buildings are already built. You raise the most money before the buildings are built. Okay, the building's already built, so we're looking at some other number. I don't know if it's 50,000 a year. I think that's what Mr. Phelps kind of targeted. I don't know what that number is. But, but 25,000 to you all, to the city and 25,000 to the schools minus some fees, I hate to have it be 50%, but minus some fees is better than nothing, you know? But, but just to move it along, I don't know if that would be advisable, John. I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
I think that's probably a good idea. I think we've discussed this a lot and I think once we get the legal issues resolved and get a direction from that perspective, you know, we can all decide and take a poll, so to speak, to see who's in favor of, of naming what and how and when and, and then take it from there. I think there's many different avenues to name on the naming rights. Very, you know, from the largest to the whole building to, to rooms and whatnot. So there's plenty of opportunity and maybe it's less limited down to certain aspects of that. But I agree with you. I think that we could talk forever and I think once we get the legal issues hammered out and give it, get a direction of what we can and can't do, you know, everybody decide how they feel about the issue and, and maybe provide a couple of options for everybody to consider. And I think we could come up with probably a resolution that is a palatable to everybody.
To that, to that end, is there someone we, maybe this is a question for Mr. Knight. Who should we assign to that task from the school standpoint? Because it sounds like Greg Huber's the right one from the city standpoint, correct? Do we have someone that we, that their minds can get together and kind of hammer that out, make sure the policies work?
If you're asking for a name right now, I'd like some time to think about that. Because I think it's, depending on the name or names, it could be swayed one way or the other way. I think what's been talked about, you know, how we honor someone, name that piece of property, how we, and that's lifetime in my mind. We aren't about to name Fenn Elementary or rename Wade Elementary or Cleggitt or Cannavon Elementary or Middle School. So sponsorship, you could almost bid it to the highest dollar if we want to get into that. But I would hope whoever we pick to be on this committee, we are not about to sell our soul either. Because when you think of our identity, we could probably find someone, if we change the city constitution, that would like their, the city renamed instead of Medina, named after somebody else and maybe get a billion dollars. Do we really want that billion dollars and lose our identity of what Medina's all about? So that's a long answer to your question, who should be on this committee. I think really council, the board ought to talk more about the split, their intention, before you jump into the nitty gritty of the details too and get the legal opinion.
I don't, I don't think you were referring to that. I think you were just referring to somebody to confer with Mr. Huber at the onset to get the framework and the outline of what the parameters would be that we'd have to decide upon.
Yeah, I think you're doing it to reverse though. Mr. Huber's not going to be able to determine the legality or the contract or changes to any of those until we give him some direction of what it is we want. If, I think if the committee comprised of, of school representatives and council, if you want the administration involved, that's, that's up to the council. But I think if, if we look at what we have now and what we'd like to see it changed to, Mr. Huber can surely take something like that and put it in a legal form to carry it out. But if we're expecting Mr. Huber to tell the committee what it is they want, I, I don't see that as, as achievable.
Nothing against Mr. Huber.
Or, or appropriate. It really should start with council and the board.
Sure, sure.
No, and I think that's fine. And I think maybe the idea would be to try to put a few representatives together and maybe discuss this a little further, you know, to brainstorm. And then once you have all those ideas down and then have the legal team figure out what's possible, what's not possible based upon what everybody determines that they would like to do. And if everything's within the parameters of the law director or something that's legal, then, then you have to determine, well, what do we want to do? So I agree, I think that that might be the, maybe if you guys can talk amongst yourselves and make a determination.
So Mr. Ross has been working on this a lot. Is there someone from, besides Mike, from council or that would like to work with Mr. Ross to form a committee? I think that's kind of what we were thinking about, is bringing the two groups together to brainstorm, work some things through, come up with a plan. Is there any interest there?
Well, the public properties committee is headed by Mr. Shields, but you're involved with the schools too, but it might be helpful to give a perspective from the city's perspective. But it may be helpful also to have two representatives from each board. At least he can bounce ideas off of. I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if we had enough time to think about who would want to serve on that, but I think we definitely should. And I think that it would definitely be helpful, as you mentioned, maybe, well, as a member of the, the committee also, I mean, getting somebody on that from the committee may be helpful too because that brings another different perspective in, from the community rather than somebody that serves on the boards. But Mike Wright would definitely have to be involved as far as him being there the whole time and may have other ideas. But, you know, no more than like a five-person committee to discuss it and come up with the ideas, I think would be, would be fine.
John? All due respect, it seems like it's continuing to get more complicated, more complicated here. And I don't know if, if it's even a great opportunity right now just to go around the table here to see who's in favor of a sponsorship or who would like to carry on just a naming right. I mean, myself, just from hearing what everybody's talked about, I'm, myself, I'd like to keep it Medina Community Rec Center sponsored by and maybe set up as a five-year contract if 25,000 or 50,000 annually is something that, that number we need to figure out. But 100% of that goes to the capital improvements of the rec center. Instead of all this division of, I mean, we're both throwing money in annually for capital improvement. Why don't we just, you know, throw it all right at that and, you know, be done with it? But that's my two cents. But I'm, I'm for a sponsorship and, you know, do it in a, a contract form, whether it's five-year or 10-year and set that number and all that money goes right to the improvement of that rec center. Thanks.
Thanks. And I think that would be part of the discussion, of course, but Mr. Simpson?
Yeah. I think to get back to the, the very basics of it, Mr. Ross's suggestion of maybe forming a committee, as, as Tom and some other people have recommended, I think that's a great idea and I think we should be starting from square one. I mean, we got some really good ideas from the gentleman that, that participated with, the company that participated with Highland. That doesn't mean that we have to choose him or another entity. We first have to decide, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of raising money, but I also am not in favor of, of selling the rights for community involvement, like the, the current fields we have. But somebody just brought up, we just got a brand new scoreboard. I mean, there's, I think there's a lot of opportunities that we could have. It's just, I think there's going to need to be a committee to be formed to set up parameters, you know, what, going with your current policy of naming rights so we don't lose, I mean, I'm not in favor of losing that portion of it for naming rights for buildings and stadiums and so forth. But is there, there may not be, but is there opportunities that, that we could bring in, you know, extra revenue for naming rights for whatever, to scoreboard or? I just think we have to go back to square one, maybe put away, that was good suggestions that the gentleman that, that helped with Highland, his company, that, I mean, that's, that's a great suggestion, but to, to actually form a committee to sit there and say, first of all, what do we want? How do we proceed? And what legally both, in both entities are we going to be able to accomplish? And I do agree with Mr. Colissar that since we are talking about the, the schools and the city doing something together collaboratively, the most, for me, the most common sense thing would be to any, if we would pursue this, any revenue that would be collected would be used for capital expenses for the rec center. So we would have less, less to worry about as far as who's splitting what and getting what. If, if we decide there is money to be made, it should go to the capital improvements on our collaborative efforts.
John, real quick, one thing I left out. I feel that we have enough talent in-house, both on the, the school side and the city side, that I would hope that we'd be able to find a substantial sponsorship without having to give a percentage of that cut just for a finder's fee. But Mayor, I don't know if you want to chime in or Jansen Worley, I mean, with the, our football stadium for the Pee Wee, didn't we just last year, a couple of years ago, had an issue with sponsorship? And I don't know if you guys want to chime in on how Greg Huber handled that, just to give the school board a vision or an idea of how we're handling on our end?
Just real brief, what we had with our sports associations, we had a sponsorship.
Hey, Jansen, you mind grabbing a mic and public can hear you too?
We had some sponsorship questions come about a little over a year ago now at Bill Dunn Field where our youth football league plays. Field, where our youth football league plays. There was a big MC Sports sign on the scoreboard, and this happened years ago. We were trying to figure out what the agreement was, and we couldn't find anything. So we explored sponsorships. I talked with Greg Huber about it, and the issue with the city was, we were not, he advised us not to have, allow sponsorships on city property because we couldn't regulate who, if we put a price tag on a field sign and it was $1,000, if Budweiser came to us, we couldn't say no to them. So what we ended up doing, he talked with several different communities, we ended up executing a license agreement. So we turned all control of the sponsorships over to a 501(c)(3), which each sports association has. Medina Gridiron Youth Football, Medina Softball Association, Medina Youth Baseball, they all have sponsorships through their various associations and have license agreements for those fields. And our license agreement, we regulated the size of the signs that they could have, the duration that they're allowed to be up, and the locations of those on city property. So basically, we turned it over to a nonprofit because his concern was with auditing of the funds and having responsibility and decision-making on who's appropriate and who's not appropriate on city property.
Well, that just got more complicated. So I think we probably should, you know, come up with two representatives from the school board and two representatives from council, together with Mike, and maybe have a few meetings to discuss these issues, and maybe invite Mr. Huber to go over that concept and take a real hard look on if we do head down the sponsorship route. What type of control do we want to have? What type of control should we have? And how should it be implemented? So I think that's probably the easiest way. So I'll give you maybe a couple of weeks, if you can talk amongst yourself and make a determination of who you'd like to be on that committee, and we'll do the same. And maybe talk to Kathy Patton and give her some names, and we'll give her some names of us, and then we'll try to get the committee together. And I think, Mike, since you're the director, you could set the meetings up. That might be the easiest way to handle that. That way, nobody has to be trying to figure out how to schedule the meeting. So is everybody okay with that kind of game plan to go forward with that? Is there anything else to talk about, the rec center, or any type of collaborative effort related there, too?
John, I just want to thank Mike for mentioning the custodians of the Maintenance Department. If you look at that complex over there, it's 500,000, over 500,000 square feet between the rec center, performing arts, and the high school. And those are probably the best utilized employees you've ever seen. Mike and I both have a two-way radio system where we hear those employees going from something going on in the Performing Arts Center to needing a table in the gym to somebody threw up at the rec center, and those employees hustle beyond belief. And one of the things Mike and I always talk about, the number-one thing for members to the rec center or renewal of memberships is the cleanliness of the facility. And we have probably, our rec center will stack up against anybody as far as just one of the nicest facilities and cleanliness factors. So those are, we get a lot of money out of those employees, and it's a great partnership there.
Yes, and that works well. Mike?
You know, if I could add to that, too, one more thing. Just to give you an idea, how often, like, other facilities call us and even ask us how our partnership works and how everything works. This morning, I actually got a call from El Paso, Texas. A lady called from the city of El Paso to ask us how our partnership works with the schools. And it's just amazing that they would even know, down in Texas, you know, call Medina to ask us how we do it and how it works. It's amazing. You know, we do a lot of, I get a lot of calls from, like, Recreation Management, and we do surveys and different things. And I don't know if they got it from there, but it's pretty incredible, all the way across the country to have someone call you and ask you, what do you guys do right?
No field trips, Mike.
Is that what he's trying to get towards?
That's where that's going.
I thought. All right. Well, I think if there's nothing else on that item, I just kind of threw in an item on recycling. I know that that's been a big issue throughout the whole county, and I know that the school stepped up for the location of the recycling bins. And I guess, just trying to figure out, how is that going? I assume that the students are enthusiastic about it, but how are the bins, are they clean? Is there some issues with them? Is there not enough of them? I mean, what has been the, I guess, on-the-ground feel for the recycling program at the various schools?
I have not been to a bin within the last month. That doesn't mean I don't recycle.
Mr. Knight, I go to the bin several times a week. So at AI Root and at Ellicanovan, they're always, everything is always in the bins, it's neat and tidy around them. The company that comes in empties them frequently, it seems like it's working well, well to me, and they seem full.
I would say our custodians will tell you at the buildings where they're located. They make a call that morning, and somebody's there to pick it up if it's been a weekend where it's overflowing or whatever. And a lot of our buildings started with one, but they've added two because of the response of residents using it, so.
I'm going to chime in there. I also go to AI Root and Ellicanovan to drop off. And I think maybe one time since this recycling program has started that the bins were packed, but just like Councilman Shields said, they were taken care of the next day. So, I mean, I think they're clean. I think whoever's keeping an eye on them is doing a wonderful job.
It is nice that teaching staff has the opportunity to encourage kids to recycle, and it's, the bins are relatively close so that kids can actually participate, carry out some of the paper. So from that respect, it's been nice.
And I think, oh, go ahead.
If I could just add, we, our initial concerns were that we would get unwanted items like paints and tires and all that. Unfortunately, we have not experienced any of that. And I would say that Blake Elementary, being probably our most popular location, we've added up to three dumpsters there. We've added a second one at Cannavon and a second one at Claggett. So it seems to be, as far as those sites being strategically located around town, that's been, I think, a great decision, so.
And I think the, I mean, the issue of the recycling is, by no means, I think, decided yet what the county would do. I think there has been discussion of curbside recycling that came up, and our representative, Nino Pacoli, goes to the MC-18 meetings, and OPTVA came in, and it might be, still have a waste mall concept where it's still a single-stream recycling. I think currently, if the numbers are projecting, as I assume they will, we're still only recycling about 2% to 3% with all those bins around the county. So to me, that's not really acceptable, but it's helpful. But we need to recycle a lot more than that, even though it's occurring, and the participation in the bins is going somewhat well. There's just, there's a lot of trash out there that's just never making its way to be recycled, and hopefully, there'll be a solution to that problem in the near future. I'm not sure what that means. But we need to figure a way in Medina to encourage that. Because I think, you know, the kids in the various schools, we keep telling them, recycle, and, you know, I think maybe they think it happens, maybe they don't think it happens. But I think we really need to show them that we're serious about it and that we mean what we say and not just saying, oh, yeah, we recycle. And then when they get older, saying, well, they lied to us, we didn't really recycle. But I think that's incumbent upon us to make sure that we can find that solution. And we'll just put that on Mr. Pacoli's shoulders since he's a representative from MC-18. Thanks, Nino. Thanks for your help on that. Is there anything else that anybody would like to bring up or discuss?
One last thing on the recycling. I have people ask me at least twice a week about where the recycling bins are now. So I think maybe the volume being down, if that's what we're talking about, is because of lack of knowledge, because those went away a while ago and now they're back. Maybe there's some way we can get the news media to help us present that again and tell them what the locations are and promote it, because it sounds like that's all that's missing. I mean, people just are like, oh, wow, it's back. And so maybe we can work on how to do that.
Well, and you bring up a good point, and just like Mr. Coyne said, the school district stepped up last year on the dumpster locations. I know we were a little hesitant, so again, like I said then, I appreciate you guys being the leader on those locations. And I know Mr. Shields was part of it in-house here to work with that. I mean, our water bill is the first thing that comes to mind for dumpster locations. I mean, that goes out every month, and maybe that's something else where the city can step in and help out with this and, you know, put something in the water bill, giving out locations, just like we do our announcement for ward meetings, something that they can put up on the fridge, a little insert. But we have discussed the recycling. I'm the chairman of Health, Safety, and Sanitation, just like I said, Nino Pacoli's our representative with MC-18. We're going to be tough on the county this year to figure out what we can do as a city to be more recycling-friendly. And that's one of the items that we have and we're in discussions with, and hopefully we can work something out that if the county's not going in the direction we want, that we have enough ability within our borders to be a more respectable recycling community than we are now. Thank you.
Thank you. The last item we have on the agenda is about grants, and I guess that's mainly on there to maybe have people think about ideas of what grants are available that we can share that would enable us to provide another service that maybe is not being provided, or cover some costs that we're currently trying to cover that maybe there's money available for, either at the state level or the federal level, but I'm not sure. Anybody have any thoughts on that? That's all I know. Because if we could find ways to, again, generate additional funds without going back to the taxpayers time and time again, that would be helpful. And there might be some other 501(c)(3)'s out there that target a specific action that they may think that, you know, we do, that they would like to see happen more often or would like to reward us of our collaborative efforts or some kind of avenue in that regard. I know that more of the state grants are being awarded to those communities and political subdivisions that collaborate, so maybe we can try to look up that, and if maybe some of the teachers or somebody has some ideas, it doesn't matter where the idea comes from, it just matters that we get an idea that maybe we can act upon, so. Does anybody else have anything that they would like to present to the meeting or questions or concerns?
So how did we leave the committee? Two members from council, two members, we got two members from the board.
Two members from the board, two members from council. Discuss it amongst yourself. You could email Kathy Patton. She can organize the committee. And then Mike Wright will get involved and get those names, and then he'll schedule the first meeting.
Okay. Well, we have our names, so.
All right. Well, Kathy, give them to Kathy afterwards, because I don't even know if we've even thought about it enough to have names, but you guys are efficient, I can tell you.
All right, well, waiting on you.
Okay, we'll be done by tomorrow. Anything else? I think you guys had to take some business.
Do we need to take roll call, do you think? Are we okay? You took the roll as we checked in tonight and gave our names.
But I would like to make this motion, if we, are we going to make the executive session motion?
Yeah, for the Medina Board plans to go into executive session.
Is that okay to do that? It'll just take me two seconds. And I'm going to add some to it, Dave. Sorry about that. I'd like to make a motion that we move into executive session, Medina City School Board members, to consider the employment and compensation of a public employer official. That's not listed, and now it is. Preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees concerning that their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment and for legal matters.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Chambers, if you could call the roll for the Medina Board.
Yes, Mr. Kalin.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Ms. Parkhurst.
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood.
Aye.
Mistress Goodmore.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. I think the board really enjoyed coming out tonight, and there's always some positive things that we discuss and good things to take forward. So thank you for everybody coming out.
Yeah, thank you, too. Everybody needs a turn.